Okay, so I'm following the order. I have to... what time is it?
9:02.
What? 9:02? All right. No recognition of any extra?
Yes.
So. Well, Frank, who's Frank supposed to be? There's Jen. Just call it. No worries. All right. Identitarian motion to approve the consent agenda with the warrants.
So move.
And you're also including the minutes?
Yes.
All right, so anyone have any discussion on the minutes, the warrants, or the agenda?
You know, have to sign this.
All right, so votes? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody? All right. Moving on to administrative reports and communications. Deb, let's start with the official change.
Okay. So we had a nice break. We, although EES does operate through the winter or holiday break, we have lower enrollment and it's a time when our teachers can, the staff can have been shifted a little bit because of the lower enrollment and that has been a welcome and refreshing break. We're back and we have 13 folks signed up to start class later this month on effective communication in the workplace. We are also gearing up for our new policy council training which will happen next week and we're hoping from lots of new members. I have been spending time since returning this month in conversations throughout the community with developing ideas and grasping a good comprehension of what the new public pre-K expansion grant will bring for our community. I don't have any solid reports to give you at this point, but I can tell you that there are great opportunities and it's a very positive feeling to think that we have some great new energy for this kind of thing. And then in addition to that, we also have the Act 166 funds that are kind of folding into the same conversation.
When is the next policy council meeting? Tuesday?
Tuesday. There will be the additional training piece for the new policy council members at that meeting.
I have it on my... am I wrong?
Would that be the third Tuesday? If it's the third Tuesday, that's right.
It's the third.
Okay, then it is not. Next one is the following.
Even though there's no school here, it doesn't affect it.
Right, we'll still have the policy council meeting.
Okay. Jen?
Okay, I apologize for being late.
You were one second late.
Saw Ben in fact. So, coming around the data for December from Oak Grove. What's going around? I want to talk a little bit just briefly about PBIS at Oak Grove. I know, just give you a quick update on our positive incentive program. We're continuing with our Monday social lessons, which has been very successful for our school. We are about to hit 20,000 grobys, which if you're new means a groby is a token that you receive when you do something positive that adds to the positive climate and culture of the school. 20,000, so we look at it as 20,000 acts of kindness and 20,000 acts of being responsible and respectful at Oak Grove. So, we have a, I won't tell you, it's a surprise celebration at school again coming up. I think this will be a podcast before then. So the second part of our PBS is we are, we just had a lot of success with it at Oak Grove. So we are, Ken Cranberg is coming from the state at the end of next week to do an audit. He and Marissa come in and look at everything that's been in place, our rules, the successes we've had, how we use our data, and give us really good feedback. So, we're in the process of evaluating ourselves as a self-reflection and then Ken Cranberg and Marissa evaluate us. And from there, I think we are actually ready to move into what's called Tier Two or Targeted PBIS, which we're moving pretty quickly, but I think we're ready for that. Where we're going to look even more so about how we can reach kids in intervention, almost like an intervention model where you do literacy. If a child, if you have data on a child who's struggling to read, you would quickly put into an intervention about their behavior, I'm sorry, about how they read, right? So if they have issues with fluency or comprehension. And you knew that, all these, all of us come in as a team to help address that fluency of those comprehension issues. So targeted, this is a simplistic version, but targeted would be that if we find out a child had a missed part of recess three times in a row or got sent out what we call time away within the classroom and they have to fill out a reflection sheet. If we've got three of those, that would automatically cause an alert where then this intervention would take place. And that could be a social group or it could be a meeting with a teacher or... It's not really a discipline thing, it can be where I would be involved, but it might be about getting to the root of the problem. Maybe they're having trouble at recess because of peer issues or because of something that's happening right in that class before they go out to recess. Or things like that to help them like really look at where their deficit is and create an intervention to help them build that skill. So, that's my very brief overview of what targeted or Tier Two, a school-wide Tier Two model would be. So it's usually using data to help create a more positive culture. That's our PBS. Quick update, the staff, our PBS team is presenting even to our staff in another two weeks about something we've been doing all year in pieces. But the PBS team is teacher-led, it's a group that comes in and they're going to... I think our next agenda is about intervention strategies when a child is escalating, how to de-escalate without causing a behavior struggle or power struggle between the adult and the child. Just a quick update on PBS. The data is coming around. Oh, one other thing, I know that when we do the community forum, Lyle's going to talk a little bit about MTSS. But just giving update, our MTSS committee at Oak Grove just did another assessment about where we are with MTSS, which will make more sense after you hear Lyle. Ah, I'm out of order. But about the work we're doing to do tiered intervention models for enrichment all the way down to really skilled one-to-one intervention for kids. Feeling great at Oak Grove and really good about the work the teachers are doing.
Taza, was a couple, were a couple actions in there, I'm not sure because of your experience with kindergarten, maybe they all make sense, but the MTT or...
MTSS is, well, thanks to your insistence and support, and I know that I'll talk more about it.
Do you remember Lyle's presentation on that last year?
I remember.
I think I brought it to you. Thanks.
I just want to make sure that I remember coming back.
That was very fair.
I was lost many times and I felt stupid.
Can't you just, may I act like I know what I'm doing?
That's what I did for a long time.
That's what the rest of us did.
I didn't want to do that to you.
I thought I had it like worked out. Yeah, not safely.
Andy?
I'll pass around our report. They're two-page and people. So, for this month, the board had asked that we report total number of known former students enrolled in Bradtown.
Yes, between the three...
Put on, on the academy report, that number is 17. And I just want to point out that those are the ones who have identified themselves as such. They may, that number may in fact be low, but those are all who chose to inform us of that. Also, you see in ours, our winter sports program actually begins on Friday. I think the other schools are beginning this week as well.
Next one.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
So ours begins Friday, we're anticipating good weather, I'm glad we're not doing it on Thursday tomorrow.
Are you on Thursday? Do I know Thursday?
Yes.
That's good. Somebody in this district somewhere is probably on Thursday Mount Snow.
So we're excited about that. We have this year 74 students going to Mount Snow and five doing cross-country, so 79 students skiing. And of course, we have students doing other activities, the Girls and Boys and Girls Club Circus Arts, which is at the New England Center for Circus Arts. Dance, skating, and skating at Memorial Park, and then Mount Snow. We did receive two new students who started this week and, as you can see, one is directly from India. And she's a, both students are great additions to the school. We're excited to have both of them, but of course, we're excited to have this student from India. And she came directly from India, so she's been, she's not been to school in the US before, so she definitely benefited from our ELL program. Our extended day session, our after-school activities begins next Monday. This is the winter session, as you probably know, we run three sessions, fall, winter, spring. Winter is typically the most heavily attended. And we don't have numbers yet, I will at the next, next report. You may have heard that on Monday, the 5th, we came back to school and then 8:45 we lost power. Pretty much all of West River lost electricity and we were, we lost electricity till about 1:30, 1:15 or so. And obviously, we kept the students in school. We monitored the temperature of the building throughout the day, all of the classrooms. The building did start to get cool. A couple of rooms, the ESOL room was coldness and we closed that after lunch. That got down to about 56 degrees. The library got a little on the cool side. So pretty much our feeling was anything that got below 60, we would, we would address. And the best I know is none of the classrooms got, none of the large classrooms got below 60. Fortunately, it was relatively warm, day was in the 30s and it was sunny and of course, depending on which room you're in at the academy, you get pretty, pretty good passive solar heat. So, the kids, the teachers took it in stride and the kids, actually I think most of them took it as an adventure. So it was, it was a good day all in all. And it helped us, you know, there were a lot of good outcomes from having a day like that. And one of us, we identified all the emergency lighting that was faulty. And even though last year we, we did that, we totally had all of them working, we had several whose batteries had died.
You can't pay them.
Good way to find out.
That's right. But it, but actually, I mean, even without, after about two hours, all of them, because the battery operated, all of them died. Then the battery lights about two hours in best case. But because it was daylight, we didn't need, we didn't need light beyond, you know, really the emergency lights were not really necessary. Really didn't have any classrooms that needed additional lighting. We had a few small bathrooms and Ron came to the rescue, brought some nice lanterns our way and we did feel a passion. Did you go into the boys or girls camping gear?
Andy, just a question, do the emergency lighting batteries recharge themselves on power from that?
Yes, they're, they're hardwired, so they do, they will charge in theory.
You'll know next time the power is out.
I'm sorry.
You'll know next time the power is out.
Yeah, there is a test function and we, we have, we did test them in the summer and everything was a go then, so we'll test them again. Issues persist, that's tonight's headline to my report. So we've continued to experience boiler problems over the break, almost on a daily basis, the boiler shut down and, because we had custodian there. However, on New Year's Eve and on New Year's Day again, the boiler shut down and it underwent some repairs, now running.
And how do you know when it goes down?
Well, there's a, interesting you should ask, because there's a red light outside that when the boiler shuts off, that goes on, or if we get low on oil and the red light goes on. And then, so, we installed that, so if the eighth or eighth or ninth student ride, drive by, we, we can identify it without going into the building if we have a boiler problem. Sometimes, 2:30 in the morning, I get a call at my house by the local PD from the red light is on. So I'll be really happy to get that decision corrected. But anyway, part of why I'm telling you is that we are spending money that wasn't budgeted, well beyond any amount of money we budgeted for this purpose. And we're, we're hoping to be done with the repairs, but since winter just begun, we're doubtful. Having people come on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, expecting on the charges double. And then, because there's a lot of overtime for us as well, so it'll be, you know, it's getting costly.
Is it a control issue?
A number of issues. The control unit, we keep shorting out the control unit and there's a temporary unit in there right now. The replacing unit would cost about $3,000 too, so we're trying to avoid that. There are other issues, we had moisture in the, in the gas that ignites it, the starter motor, something, a number of issues that have all been addressed, so we're hopeful. And I know that we're real close to going up to bid on the pellet boilers, is that correct?
But we're not close to not needing the boiler.
Right, so again, just want to urge the board to keep moving forward on that. We will need to have something going this summer, for sure.
You'll be happy to know, we talked about it at our brief meeting on Monday. We did question Frank and Ron, we all talked about it and everybody was...
He is being prepared, isn't he?
It is.
Now, Andy, I know you said it was $3,000 for that control unit board.
Yep.
Now, how much have you spent in overtime and the extra?
We've actually purchased two rebuilt units that run around $650 each to, and both of those shorted out in relatively quick order. We have, we have another one in there right now, sort of a hybrid that seems to be working. If this one fails, we're, we are going to go for the new $3,000 one. So just the last, last bit checking for that. Interesting, we had a reporter from WCAX TV, Channel 3 came by today, apparently she was talking to...
David.
We told her about your boiler.
Wanted to see the boiler, so the boiler may be famous, had it on free news.
Did you tell her about the breakdowns on the New Year's Day?
No, we didn't, I didn't really go into that with her. But she was mainly interested in schools that were converting to wood heat, so, and she wanted to take a peek at the boiler and so forth, so she filmed the boiler herself. Last, I just want to report that to increase breakfast participation, we are running a free breakfast next week for students at Academy. And it's a free universal breakfast. We've altered the menu to sort of excite the students about some healthier menu selections and we hope that a lot of kids will participate in that. And I know the other schools, we're going to stagger it, and the other schools will be doing something later this winter.
So at Green Street School, we started our second session of after-school tutoring. I reported this at the last board meeting, right before the winter break. So that session runs till February 12th and we have 45 students participating in that program. Essentially, it's a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday program. Recess Club and Running Club have been on the reports since the beginning of the year as kind of an idea of some things we wanted to put in place. Myself, Chris Feifield, our P E teacher, paraprofessional, Andrew Kavanaugh, are going to be putting in place a recess club program where we'll run at different grade levels and different sections throughout the year. So really looking forward to starting that up. Beginning of this time of year, we'll probably run some club sessions in the gymnasium, so it's provide some indoor options and also take advantage of some teaching time during recess. So I'll be reporting on that in coming meetings as well. After-school chorus, which is a Braderville Town program, which Green Street hosts, will begin again for another session on January 12th. Happy to report out our student senators who have been working, really are, on this project Feed the Thousands Food Drive, which is a Wyndham County drive. Really proud of them, they've taken on a leadership role, they've been out into the community, set a goal of collecting 1,000 pounds of food in the beginning of the school year. And on December 19th, we were able to officially announce that we had reached our goal. We had collected close to 1,200 pounds of food. And those senators spent the morning at Hannaford's soliciting shoppers for donations, providing community service, bailing up, I think we filled up two full school buses at least that day. So it was a really good day and kids felt great about their work and felt like they were doing something in the, in the community, which was nice. Moving forward, we're going to set up a field trip for the same senators to visit the Vermont Food Bank. And the idea is to show them that this is a community need that's not just during the holiday season, but it's, you know, this is a year-round thing.
Just one of them buried?
No, right now, Potty Road.
Well, Potty Road, okay.
So we'll be going there with Chris there, who's the manager. He's going to take us for a tour. Senators will be able to ask questions, they're going to report out to the classes on what they've learned, hopefully we'll be writing up some reports for the newsletter. And, and they'll be doing some community service. They'll be packing some meat in the freezers and they'll be organizing some of the different food items. So it'll be a nice, again, community, community project. Like to point out the Town School Theater Program, which is the three Bradtown schools in collaboration with the New Orleans Youth Theater, which we started at the beginning of the year. We're getting close to our performances. So just to give you a heads up, January 23rd, 24th, 25th, there will be performances at the NEYT, the 23rd, the Friday night will be an evening performance, 24th will be a matinee as well as an evening, and then on Sunday, the 25th, will be another matinee. The idea is the following week is to send third-grade students from the three Town Schools on a field trip to see the performance again during the school day. So excited about that, we have 18 kids from Green Street involved in that program, so...
And where are the performances, after theater?
At the theater, yeah. Winter sports program starts up next week on Wednesday. Again, it's a four-week program this, this year, so I have those dates right there, if you flip the page over. Listed the activities that are taking place and the number of students participating in each activity. So we have 54 students going to Mount Snow. Quite a few students going snowshoeing, across-country skiing. We're going to be up at the park at the skating rink, doing a collaboration with Circus Arts, Taekwondo, Kelly's Dance Academy will be coming to Green Street for hip-hop class.
Got a video of that and show us.
We're going to try to video, you won't see me to it.
There's a tradition, yeah.
And Bonneville Environmental Educational Center, 11, 19 students. And not including in these figures are kindergarten students, but with our current K staff, we're going to be doing an in-house dance program with our kindergarteners. So essentially, a school-wide program.
Mark, remind me, first through sixth, for you guys, everybody does it, right? All four weeks?
Yep.
But they don't ski and snowboard until fourth grade like everyone else do, and they go at first grade?
They go early, second grade.
Second grade.
That must be something to see. That's a greater ice piece.
Not willing to see if you're non-skiing or you watch the second grader come to this and gather them up.
Yeah, I know, it's a bad thing.
So one last thing to report, we're also a PBIS school. We had a great celebration the week before our break. And I already shared the details at the last meeting, but what I've forgotten to share is in early November, we started a program with the bus company where we wanted to do positive write-ups on kids for showing acts of good citizenship on the bus and being a good role model on the bus. So we started a Gecko Bus Award. And at the end of each week, our bus drivers will email us the names of one to two students on their bus who earned that reward. And we've been recognizing them in the newsletter, putting a picture of them on our bulletin board in the front hallway. And it's made a difference, not only with the kids, but I think with the bus drivers as well. They're feeling like a tie to the school and more communication and it's nice to be sharing positives back and forth.
Instead of they can hopefully...
Really happy with that, the development of that program and working with our student drivers.
Okay, so moving on, any committee reports? Do you have any?
I'll just briefly report that, follow-up to the middle school leadership training that we've done in the summer, the two days at SIT. We're having a third day tomorrow from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at UHS and BAMS. We have about 90 students, so we'll have a good number of sixth graders from each of the schools along with seventh and eighth graders. And so we'll do some follow-up activities to what they did in the summer. We also want to focus on race issues, things and current events that would impact their work at school, and so we'll have a facilitated discussion about that. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow. And other than that, when we get to the budget, we can talk about our work.
Do we have any policy councils met yet since last time? I don't think there are. Energy Committee?
Essentially, it's Monday. You know, we reviewed all the bidding as far as the installation. This is the information that Andy gave us about the heating boiler. We anticipate some problems, but maybe, we're kind of hoping it might hold up until, yeah, I don't know. The board continues on that, as was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. What else? No, we haven't really, is there any report, Frank, or any conclusion to the negotiations with the next son or whatever, the energy company?
I did get a phone call on that date from Jake Alastair, the president, indicating he was still optimistic that he was going to have other off-takers, but he wasn't ready to give me a name and, you know, a memo of understanding to procure. So that's, that's where we're at and we're still hoping the town might be interested as well. So, we're in, we are losing electricity over on that field and, you know, there's not a lot this time of year, so it won't be an issue that surfaces, probably until, you know, late spring.
But how?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was confused on that, because we signed the first contract before you were here with a different company and then it moved and they brought us a contract and we refused to sign the contract until we had some answers and we're still waiting for answers. So in the meantime, do we actually get the benefits without agreeing to the contract?
We do in that, what they asked us to sign was an addendum, not a new contract. And the addendum was, was... And the addendum was, was, uh, more definitive around saying, we'll buy all the credits that are produced by the field. And I recommended that you wait until we clarify the fact that we're only interested in what we consume. So that addendum is, is still.
For the first contract, that was not voided?
That's right. There was no, no voids.
There was no, yeah. But something that did come to mind, I hadn't thought of it in a while, is that when we had the initial conversation with Silver, there was going to be a demonstration of project solar panel installed at Academy. Is that?
Well, it's.
It was sort of kind of maybe, but has anything come of that? Do we know?
Yeah, I, I think there, that I'm sure was part of the negotiations. At this point, Next Sun Energy, you know, essentially assumed control and responsibility for the contract. The contract itself doesn't, doesn't say that that would happen. And they're playing very much by that contract document, so.
That was rather a gentleman's agreement at the time.
I think there is something about a, that the performance can be monitored online that students in the schools could go and look and see what.
I thought there was something in the contract about sharing in a broad form.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I would assume they'd be interested in that. It's just good.
Yeah, it wasn't going to be anything too expensive on their part.
Want that all to be. Some teachers wanted to monitor it and show the kids where the lights were coming from and do less of sustainability. We have pretty, pretty local examples.
Yeah.
As long as we're, Ron's pointing out, I think it's good. Let's, let's drop down the Academy School Boiler bid as long as that fits into energy as well.
Can we just update us on your upcoming news?
Right, sure. So next Thursday, I think it's the fifteenth, I am meeting with Stevenson Associates and Kohler Lewis, the design engineers. And it is, uh, the, the meeting intended to move forward with a timeline that.
When is it?
Pardon?
When is it?
Uh, I think it's a ten o'clock meeting.
At what day and where?
Uh, I think it's the fifteenth at my office. And the, uh, the intent is to give the Public Service Board a little bit of time to review those R F Ps that were due today. And, and our, our hope, you know, I have somewhat of a low expectation, but our hope is that, that they will begin to open a window for us to access the funding that we've been very interested in pursuing. So, and that's the only reason why we haven't met earlier. We're giving the Public Service Board, we're working within their, their process. But there's no indication that there will be any obstacles to picking up where we left off and, and moving pretty quickly. The objective is to have no later than the end of March, a bid award. So that, you know, inventory can be ordered and work can be scheduled and hopefully hit the ground running as soon as the kids are out in June and have the work done in August. So it's essentially confirming that. I do recall, and you probably do as well, in our meetings in the summer, there were a couple of contingencies that were undefined. And we, and I had asked, I think I gave them a list of five or six things to be sure to address so that in the future bid process, we don't, you know, discourage or make anything unclear for our bidding community. So expect to address those on Thursday.
So I'm going to ask the question, my husband and all men, but given that we have this sort of a situation going, is there any way in the request for proposals or request for bids that you could say that the, is it possible to do the project in a week or something during a spring break? And it could go in ahead of that?
It's not.
It's in time?
Yeah.
There's too much left to happen.
Yeah. It's mainly the lead time on the orders for the boiler.
That come over from.
And the delivery. They may, you know, we'll see with the bid, with the bid award does. But, but yeah, based on, you know, I think that, that was hoped for last year and the realization was it, it was unrealistic and it would potentially put the school in jeopardy of opening. And so that's why it was, you know, I mean, that was one reason. But the other reason, of course, was the bids were more than, than the budget.
Because there was no time.
Yeah.
I had to ask the question. I didn't think there was a.
The two wood pellet boilers that we were looking at last year were coming from Europe. I can get perhaps Germany.
Yeah, Austria.
Austria. And the lead time was pretty substantial, as I recall. It was sixty to ninety days at least.
Yeah.
So just a little concerned if, if the bids, if we award the bid end of March and we're looking at best-case scenario, sixty to ninety days. We're already, it already starts to raise my anxiety of getting tight again.
That'd be a question for Kohler Lewis and Stans. Because I think when the, when we did with, I can't remember the details exactly, but I believe that when the bid went out, somebody looked into it and they were going to be available within a month. It wasn't a long wait. There were some already on a boat coming to the U S to some.
It was a different boiler?
No, it was the one boiler. The same variety.
I think one of the things I were looking at was the, the timing of the installation of the backup oil and the primary pellet. You know, one comes out, so you've got room, so you're not working one on top of the other. There's a methodology of getting one in before the other, and I forget what the sequencing was, but.
But that would come up for sure.
But that, it does, like most projects, they're going to do it just-in-time arrangement. And ninety days on the outside would, you know, fall into June. So that's why we're saying no later than, uh, end of March.
Yeah, you'll help heat by the middle of July.
Okay.
I mean, I'm prepared.
Yeah, it's good. They keep asking.
Well, I mean, we could actually say that we should close it by March fifteenth or something too, right?
Yeah, the only reason why we're not moving quicker is that we don't want to jeopardize the loss of access to the funding. But clearly, we can't, we can't wait and put the school in a position of not being able to heat buildings. So, and that, I think that is the end of March is our, is our latest, which means, you know, at least a thirty-five, forty-day bid cycle. So we've got to get things moving, you know, early February in order to award a bid in March.
I guess the kids have some experience now, no heats. They're all prepared to get me. All right, finance committee, we're going to push off. Or is there anything from finance committee that would be different from the budget?
Uh, nothing, no, nothing.
I'm a.
Where work is done.
Diversity?
Nothing.
Nothing since. Any other committee that we don't?
No.
No, all right. So we're on to the revised budget with tax implications and the budget.
And so as we go over the budget, we can review some changes and then also talk about the tech, technology as it relates to this budget and other questions that we have as well as the taxes.
Okay, everybody have a copy?
Yep.
Okay. So we, we haven't done much to change the bottom line. I did add a tax estimate. I think we briefly reviewed the revenues at our last meeting. So I can touch base on those again, but just to revisit the totals there. Current budget, fifteen million, four fifty-seven, you see, for expenditures. And we have on page one, the revenues that fund that. And the proposed budget, fifteen million, four oh two, so down fifty-five thousand or about a third of one percent. The, uh, the, as we, we can go through the expenditure plan, of course, and, and talk about the good things that we're going to accomplish with, with those resources. But let me spend just a moment on page one in terms of the fund balance. So again, just as a point of reference, we ended up, the most recent fiscal year, with the, ending fund balance. We're in the middle of the audit, so I expect it'll be about that, but it could, could change. So it's preliminary, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. You see that we planned on reducing that by five hundred thousand in the fifteen budget. You see in the, in, under fund balance, we have that five hundred thousand and a half. So that would reduce us down to about four hundred thousand if we received all the revenues this year and Andy doesn't have to spend too much more on the boiler. And we're, we're on, on budget in fifteen. We, we would end up with about four hundred thousand. You can see that we have the two hundred thousand dollar figure for fiscal year sixteen to help reduce the tax liability, which would leave us with about that same balance for one more year. When we go to the back page, this directly related to these assumptions. You know, we start first with the spending plan. Page eleven is the, the tax estimate. This is a document that's developed in kind of its format by the Agency of Education's part of the statute. And we start with the spending plan, the fifteen million, four oh two that I mentioned and that we've reviewed substantially as of the last meeting and the seventeenth and also on the third. We could talk about a little bit of adjustments, but it's not much different. That, that budget is reduced by the revenues that are received by the school that we reviewed there on page one. It's, it's revenue other than the education fund grant. The education fund grant is the, is the number that gets turned into a tax rate. So what, what that leaves us is net education spending. So we take our total budget, we reduce it by these grants, you know, special education, a little bit of interest, some transportation reimbursements, all of that stuff on page one. And we get a net spending, fit twelve million, five eighty-eight. Bradrow Town is, is one of the few districts that are seeing an increase in enrollment. We take our net spending divided by our students. And these are equalized students. That's line fifteen is the student count on page eleven. And there's our, what we call equalized spending per student according to the school funding formula. That number is, we, of course, I would be working very closely with, with Ron in the administrative team if, if, you know, much more work to do if we were anywhere near seventeen thousand, one oh three. That's the number that triggers a penalty. You see, we're well under that. But we take our fifteen, three twenty-nine and we divide it by a state index that's announced by the legislature every year. That number is on line twenty-seven. It's, it's, it's right below line twenty-seven. It's at nine thousand, four fifty-nine. That is a statistic the legislature announced as part of the funding formula that says, okay, how much does Bradrow Town spend? As a relationship to that number, which means fifteen million, three twenty-nine divided by nine thousand, four fifty-nine equals a factor of one hundred and sixty-two percent. We, we spend one hundred and sixty-two more percent more than that number. You multiply that by your, your statewide tax rate and there's your tax rate. That's, that's an easy calculation this year because the tax commissioner and the governor has recommended one dollar as the statewide property tax. So with one hundred and sixty-two percent of one dollars and one point six two, that, that will be our equalized tax rate if we, if we went forward with these revenue assumptions and these spending assumptions. We're only half of, of the educational expense that our taxpayers pay in Bradrow Town. So then we look at the high school. That's the next set of data. And, and the distribution, those numbers are in this, this document. The distribution is, says that we have, let's see if I can find the percentage. Fifty-one point six four percent. That's line twenty-nine. So about half of our kids are in Bradrow Town system. And the balance, which would be forty-eight percent, right, forty-eight point three six. That's on line thirty-five, R U H S. And the school funding formula basically says, well, you're going to take a weighted average of those two tax rates in order to get to your tax rate. So at the very bottom line, line forty-one, it says that with this budget proposal would create a dollar sixty-eight as a compared to a dollar sixty-five. That's about a three cent increase, which is about a one point nine percent increase on the tax rate. One, a couple of favorable things in this funding formula this year. It's not always the case, but this year, two things. One is enrollment and growth. And we have a C L A increase also. That's on line thirty-one. It's common level of appraisal is, is a measure, you know, that says, is the town's grand list assessed close to what real estate sales are occurring at? And the answer is yes, but at this point, the, the statistics, according to the Department of Property Evaluation and Review are saying, oh, well, about two percent, your sales are about two percent under margin. So they're saying, we're going to give you some relief when you go to the tax register. And they actually take our tax rate and lower it. And that's why, if, if you just looked at equalized numbers, they're actually up a little bit higher. That is on line forty, if you're, if you're interested. If we didn't have the change in the grand list, our taxes would be at three point four percent. But with the changes in grand list, we're on line forty-three, we're at one point nine. So there's our funding, funding summary. And as far as the.
What can I ask?
Sure.
You answered it, but the question I've written down, you kind of answered. But do you know the numbers, you said student numbers are going up. Do we have actual numbers that we can pull up to people?
This is the new comparison.
That's it?
Those are the two young weighted averages.
And they're equalized numbers?
Yeah.
So.
The not equalized numbers.
What's the number of real national people, children?
Yeah, the non-equalized, I probably could give you those numbers. And if I can't do it right now, I'll send.
We have some, you have the reports.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, but not compared to previous years.
Not compared to previous years. But my point being, when people say statewide, you know, we go to these meetings and they say, well, the number of students is going down, the number of students is going down. I just wanted to be able to say, the hours are going up by X.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can give you those. And, and when you ask those questions, it, we always have to define the period because, as we're just saying, they, they change every day. You'll, you'll see a new report.
Right.
And so from the school funding point of view, it's that census data.
The October date.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what.
That's what we want, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
And for as many years back as you can, can put on a chart.
Now, I think we have that in the town report, right?
In the town report.
Yeah, yeah. It may not be census data as of October one, but I think it's census data at a, at a, at a kind of a traditional point in time. But our, our, our census for this most recent October that we recorded was eight hundred and sixty-two students for Bradrow Town. And if you went back to the prior year.
That was October fourteenth, was eight fifty-two?
Yeah, yeah. What they, what the state calls is the October, it's the forty-day count, is that what they call it? I, I don't look at the actual data collection, but it's, it's a window of time between October and November. Like October first and November seventh. The, the reports are due on November seventh, so the agency of that. The reports are due on November seventh to the Agency of Ed. And if we go back to the prior year, eight hundred and fifty-nine. So there's the difference in the most recent two years. When you're looking at the same point in time, under the same criteria. The other issue, when you go to the town report and you talk about student census, elementary students don't usually have foreign exchange students, but you might. Usually a building census is going to have everybody in the building. The ALE wants to know resident students who you're going to pay for. So this sorts that out. And this also sorts out only those students that are residents. If you have a tuition student, then the town who's sending that tuition student and paying is going to have that statistic in their report. So eight fifty-nine versus eight sixty-two. So not a lot of change there, but the factoring of about point two, maybe point two-five, I'll have to check, for students in poverty is added to this statistic. And when we see a number like that, eight fifty-nine going to eight sixty-two, and then we say, how come our equalized students are up so much? A lot of times, that's the answer. The other issue is the English, as a second language learner, that's also a factor that's applied. And you just heard that there appears to be quite a bit of growth in that group of students. So again, that's going to increase. And if you're proportionally getting more of those students than, let's say, Dumerson or Gilford, then you're going to look very differently from an equalized students' point of view. And the whole purpose of that is to lower your tax rate so that you can bring interventions to the school and you can fund the English language learner positions and the various programs that you heard the principals are. So we're not supposed to take the money and run, we're supposed to reinvest. And I think this sport's been doing that.
That shows up in the state revenue grant support on the revenue form?
Well, no, it simply is a calculation on the tax rate. So there is no, there used to be a block grant where you could associate more kids with more state grants. Not any longer. It's that formula that I just described. It's pretty simple. There are a lot of complexities to how they define each one of those four variables. You know, the spending, that's pretty straightforward. We know all about that. We know more than anybody else. That's our budget. But then when they get to the base education spending index, the nine thousand four fifty-nine, who knows how they come up with that? But the concept is very simple. It's a number, it's a denominator. It's compared to your numerator, which is spending per student. Take the ratio, multiply times the statewide poverty tax, and there's your tax rate. But again, how do they come up with a dollar on the statewide poverty tax? What relationship does that have to inadequate education? We don't have a lot of background on that. And then the equalized student number is a two-year weighted average. So it isn't just that. So there are a number of factors as you get into the details of it, but the concept is pretty straightforward, and it's illustrated on that page in the budget. So did you have another question on that?
No.
Anything else before we just give you some highlights on, it's probably only about five changes. And they're relatively light.
Okay. Maybe then we should also, as we get into those areas, do the technology review as it relates to the sheets that the principals have given you previously.
Okay, so actually, Mark, if you wouldn't mind just highlighting that, I think, maybe four changes that we made. And it was no net increase or decrease, it was a refocus. Okay. So I felt like I needed to bump up some money in building maintenance to cover some projects that I'd like to have done this summer. Notably, the learning center reconfiguration. And felt like I was a little shy there based on some goals that have come in more recently. So essentially, if we go to the building maintenance line, just page eight. Let's see. Increase that from sixty-eight to seventy-five thousand. So an increase of seven thousand dollars. To get that increase, I made some subtractions. Teaching supplies, reduce that line by a thousand dollars.
Page three.
So from twenty-five to twenty-four. Computer equipment, reduce that by four thousand. So from forty-one five to thirty-seven five.
That was on page ten.
And then both instructional equipment and program improvement, reduce each of those lines by one thousand dollars. So essentially shifted seven thousand dollars into building maintenance. And then Andy had a request which we included in the program improvement under the professional development teacher leader.
What page?
Page five at the bottom.
Hey Frank, just looking at the computer supplies that you were, for Green Street, that you took a thousand dollars off. I'm not showing, I'm showing last budget, the last draft was at three thousand, and this one's still at three thousand.
It's computer equipment.
Oh, computer equipment, okay. Sorry.
Which is the thing that I never understood, what's your supplies equivalent?
Well, equipment we do have to capitalize, supplies we don't. The main difference is one's supposed to last more than a year. That's equipment, and supplies are generally consumed in... So we were saying on page five, professional development program teacher leader. It was level funded and we put it to the forty-five thousand.
That you recall, we had covered one of those stipends through the one percent funds last year. So we decided to load it in to the teacher leader category, which had been historically. Now, in order to accomplish that, we reduced some line items, so it was a net. There was no change really. The environmental program up in the top of that area, we dropped twelve hundred from that based on the actuals, when we looked at kind of the current trend of use of those monies. We eliminated the co-teaching four thousand. In a sense, that four thousand was one of those teacher stipends, so we just consolidated that into the teacher leader area. And then I think there might have been another small decrease in some of these other ones. But it's a net, you know, no change in terms of the overall budget to accomplish that.
And then we did have one change that increased the budget a little bit. Jen had asked for instructional equipment to be increased, and we did that. Instructional equipment paid four, paid four. And, you know, with that change, you can see it looks a little more equitable among the three buildings. Where before, under instructional equipment, the first line, Oak Grove, we had five hundred in there. Jen asked for the three thousand, so we made that change. And you can see that the actual, in fiscal year fourteen, we needed to catch up with investment in instructional equipment. So we're probably sustaining that. So overall, if you looked at your prior budget and you looked at this one, it's only about a thousand dollar difference.
Are there more cameras of the technology?
Yeah, I think we should...
Any other questions that we have?
I just need something explained to me, just because I'm way behind, but... What constitutes, like, when someone wants to increase, say, for building maintenance, why is the strategy used of reducing other areas versus when someone wants to increase for instruction materials, it's added? I just don't know the answer to that.
I think historically, what we try to do is, in the first drafts, look at the history of those accounts and say, what are the actual costs? And try to mirror those unless there's a rationale for an increase. And in some cases, I know, like Oak Grove a few years ago, we really had to spend a lot more money on building improvements because things had, you know, not been made attention to. Academy, the same thing, but Academy, I think we've done more of the long-term bonds. And I think, you know, we'll see tonight in this budget, Green Street has more technology than the others because, again, catching up with some other areas.
So it's kind of like, if you can, if there are areas you can reduce, that way you're not asking for an increase?
Yeah, and I think we're sensitive to the tax impact. You know, this is a levels-funded budget, a little less. But we still know the tax rate's going up three cents. And so when we get to this stage, when Frank talked to principals and used it with me, I'm looking at other areas that we could kind of offset, so we're not bringing back. You know, we started with a one point one four percent increase. We got it below, and now I'd like to keep it below as opposed to having more requests and then we have to stop bumping it up.
So it's latent in the process?
It kind of is. I mean, we're pretty close to, I mean, I think the next meeting, we'd be adopting, we'd be recommending an adopted budget. So, yeah. And, you know, I have to say, the principals are great in terms of cooperating and making sure that, you know, that there's equity, really advocating for important programs and knowing that they need the funding in certain areas, and then deciding, well, for this year, maybe I can give up, those sorts of things.
I have one question. And I just happen to notice, replacing instructional equipment and thinking, does the supervisory union or does the Bradrow School System have a yearly, semi-yearly option of old stuff, what the state does? I have seen warehouses for desks, chairs, tables, file cabinets. Do we have a yard sale?
We do, we do from time to time, but, you know, at the high school level, more so than the elementary level, equipment gets worn out completely, so it has usually no useful life. And that includes doors, you know, and door frames and floors. But at the elementary level, typically, we fully utilize, you know, some of our bigger investments, our technology, and we go five to seven years on the technology. So it doesn't have much value, and it's more of a disposable issue than it is, you know, a sale. But, you know, certainly, when we own businesses, we would sell buses and so on, but it's... You know, the objective is to fully utilize the asset. And when it's, at its end, if it's useful life, there's usually no value to... And you don't want to create a liability, of course.
Well, you know, it was just curious, and I know I certainly don't want to go out and buy a bunch of kindergarten chairs. And we spent a lot of meeting sitting with those things. Firewood is useful.
Yep.
At the same time, I think it does bring up, as a parent, I've noticed stuff comes home at the end of the year and that's not in the best shape anymore than what you make of, like, a book, books or materials. And they're often accompanied by some helpful guides to parents to please use. This could be useful over the summer, too.
Your kids aren't taking desks with them.
No, top shit. Well, just to clarify, some of the stuff that we send home, we've tried to, we've been trying to send things home with kids for summer reading, for example. And those are typically, it's a combination of things that are known and used. But often, it's things that we purchased with a specific fund. Or that, it might be kind of one fund, it might be a grant or something like that, so that we can give kids who may otherwise not have opportunity to read books over the summer. We do give that stuff away. But sometimes friendly stuff specifically for...
And it's something, too, that the parent groups have identified with, the teachers and the staffs and the scholastic book, where we specifically identify some of those books. I'm trying to, but it's a point of interest that, I mean, it's not chairs or such things, but it's something that is helpful and goes on.
So do you want to take a little focus on technology, based on your information that you shared by school?
Well, I think we hinted out the numbers of technology, the number of devices, but we didn't give them how technology was used. We have that. Do you want that now?
Yeah, yeah, and we could highlight certain areas in the budget that kind of support that.
Well, pass out Oak Grove's coming.
I was just looking at that, I don't think any of the...
This is different?
So is this an update on the line?
I think it is.
Mark, you gave us one before, is this an update?
It is, yeah.
So I should toss it.
Okay, actually, it's basically...
Is this supposed to be...
Is there any brochure? So, um, we'll just go to Green Street and then...
Want to start? So if you look at Green Street's kind of graph and notes, the first section is teacher computers. As you can see, we have twenty computers, twenty teachers who are using a computer that is five to six years old, which is, it's really old. We have fifteen teachers, fifteen computers, which are four years old or less. So looking at that situation, I feel like we are in a situation where we need to increase that immediately. So that's one section of my budget proposal, is to start getting on a better three- to four-year program where we're rolling computers over.
So you've included that in this year's budget, huh?
Yeah, and I can explain that. I'll go through the whole thing, though. Explain it to some rationale. Classroom technology, what we currently have is we have two smart boards, interactive boards, which are in a first-grade classroom and a sixth-grade classroom. We have an Eno board, which is another version of an interactive board in our library, which the whole school utilizes throughout the year. This year, a focus of mine has been on adding mounted projector document cameras to classrooms with all the cabling. So this year, we've added eleven of those, which is essentially two-thirds of the way to a complete interactive classroom. So the next phase would be to add the actual board. So taking away a regular whiteboard and adding the interactive board. So that's been a focus of mine this school year. And then we have a number of mobile projectors on carts, which give... And then we have a number of mobile projectors on carts, which get moved from room to room. So those are essentially being used by special teachers now, academic support teachers, special ed. teachers. We finally got to the point this year where all of our classrooms have pretty much that mounted technology, so that's where our resources have been spent. Student devices, this year, we made a purchase of 40 Chromebooks, which are housed on our second floor, grades three through six. Chromebooks are about a third of the cost of a MacBook, and we've really been happy with the Chromebooks, they're being used every day, daily, by those grade levels. And you can see, as you go farther down in student devices, we had been spending a lot of money on minimal amounts of computers because Macs are really expensive. You're going to get to the point where you want like two students to one computer throughout the school, and you're going with a Mac, that's a significant amount of money. So part of my plan for this budget is to also utilize these Mac Pro's and Airs in giving them to teachers, and then focusing, purchasing, continuing the purchasing of Chromebooks for students. So I want to get into the practice where we're using Chromebooks with students, which is very affordable, we can turn over much quicker, and continuing with the Macs for teachers. So that's part of the rationale and the planning for not only next year, but years to come.
Well, that's good, too, Mark, because I know BAMs in the high school are going to Chromebooks, so the kids are getting the usage on them before they even reach those grades.
Which, Ron, was a question I had, whether Damarston and Vernon and Gilbert, are they all also going towards the Chromebooks with their kids? So then the teachers at BAMs are not getting a hundred different?
Right. So then on the back page, again, just some other hardware that we have in the building. E-Max, those are obsolete, that we have in 2003. But some of the other things that we have, Mac laptops from 2006, 2008, they don't get used, they're very unreliable and they take forever, so we're at the point of probably disposal for those.
What's the whole yard sale?
Well, you know, the fishing season's coming up, maybe need boat anchors.
So then...
What's the scanner for? Don't you have that on the total copier?
We do, that is also used in the library, it has a scanner as well, which gets used, but the new copiers do have scanners, so now we have four in the building, the three copiers in the library. The bottom section of the back page, just showing ways the technology is being used, and then our total enrollment when this document was put together. I also included just a rationale for my budget this year, how I would use that money, and I pretty much talked about that, going to Chromebooks, the first bullet point. Moving to the final phase of the work we've done this year is adding some interactive Eno boards to classrooms. We want to purchase iPads for the undergrads, and the goal is to get five in each classroom from K to 2, so that classrooms can have small group work sessions using iPads. And then purchasing iMac computers to start a three, I have three-year cycle here, a three- to four-year cycle in terms of a budgeted process for teachers.
And when the testing starts, it has to be done on the computers, and it can be done on the Chromebook one, and it doesn't matter?
Right.
And so, and that has a longer time for the testing, so it's not necessary to have one computer available for each second or whatever?
Right, this year, we'll be using Chromebooks and Macbooks for that aspect.
Ultimately, would ever, would ever be an advantage to have the teachers using the same technology as the students in terms of lessons that they provide, or does it not matter?
They do, they do use them when they're working with students as well, so they can familiarize themselves with them, but I don't think a Chromebook would give the teacher the same type of power that they need, flexibility they need as a, like an iMac laptop.
But they can't connect because of Google Doc. So it's Google Docs, it's accessible.
Every kid has a Google app, even in the preschool.
And Mark, you're looking at iMacs of the teachers instead of Macbooks?
That's supposed to be Macbooks, yeah.
Actually, I said that, but I don't know that. Does every kid have a Google account or Google app, or what age does that say?
We've been doing it in fourth grade and up this year.
We're all good at that school? Can I tell you how thrilled my fourth grader is, by the way, to actually have an Eno app?
Wow, some really...
How long has that lasted?
Oh, no, she's excited.
I know.
She can get on Google back.
So any questions for Mark before we go to Jen at Oak Grove?
So I, because in December, I had sent out the actual numbers of laptops and keyboards and that sort of. Do I need to review that, or we? So the other document I just sent out was, you had asked for just an explanation of how technology is used in schools in that Oak Grove. An overarching theme is that it's everywhere, and it's really, it's a tool to access, our instruction to access learning for students. It's more and more becoming, we move away from paper, and we still have it, and we still have books, but more and more, it is the go-to source for how we engage students. And we now have seven Eno boards, we're moving that number up hopefully this year, and they're used every day, I don't think, I think teachers would have a very hard time if I took the Eno boards away, because they're just such an important part of how they teach.
And you say Eno and Smart, they're the same thing, right?
Yeah, I'm saying brand names, that's what I'm saying. So interactive whiteboards.
And this was yours from the...
And so, in general, our plans are very similar to Green Street Academy, we have a lot of commonality amongst the preschools, that our teachers are really in need of a powerful MacBook or a laptop that gives them access to, you know, technology on the whiteboard, interactive whiteboard you need more than a Chromebook. And also just be able to be planning and presentations and like that, and really be able to house some things on the hard drive versus having everything in Google Docs, which the formatting and Google's own documents aren't quite there yet all the time. But our students were moving towards Chromebooks. One thing you brought up, Jill, is, you know, we've been able to have a one-to-one initiative having Chromebooks in sixth grade and laptops in fifth and fourth, so we've had one-to-one for four through six, except with Apple's recent operating system update, it made an entire classroom almost non-functional. So we're kind of back in that system, and as you probably know, Apple doesn't let you undo your update and you can't function without it. So it just wiped out a whole classroom, we had functional computers that we could use for X back, but now we're not, so.
But they're fixing it, right?
No, no, that's, that's part of Apple's obsolete, doing things obsolete.
You're a...
We have to rebuy. But I feel like one of the great benefits, doesn't mean they're a good benefit, having a small school, but one of them is, it's a lot easier to get technology into the school design, a 20 for a class versus 60 for a grade level, you know, so it's fortunate. And I'm trying to, any questions about the list of different ways they're used?
I don't know that all of you guys, if you don't have like a fourth grader, I think it's really hard, or a third grader, second grader. I feel really privileged in that way, that I've been watching what they've been doing, and it is remarkable what these kids are actually doing. And when you see this list that Jen's putting together, they're just names unless you've actually watched a kid do it. And some of the stuff that goes on this SumDog, for example, it's just, it's a game where they add and subtract and multiply, it's all these math things, and they get really engaged in it and keep it going. And Mark is one in particular, has been excited about that over the summer, even in the weekend or whatever. So, and then just watching an iPad, as a third grader, they were, they wrote poetry with it, and then they went out and they took pictures with the camera, and then they came back and they put it all together and mounted it. And I'm watching my sons in fifth grade and in fourth grade, they were putting together powerpoint presentations and, I mean, so it's, it's really, when Jen says it, it's really not just an add-on. I think it's hard for, it's hard, it's probably hard for us as parents and school board members, but it's probably even harder for a town rep to some, maybe there's some way at our March meeting to be able to show that, that we're really keeping, but it's, it's so much more than, oh, keep them occupied for a few minutes and let them do something, that it's, it's...
It's well beyond keyboard, you know?
It is so much more, yeah.
Pretty much every, every program, every new curriculum has some...
And when you see that really overspend instructional equipment line, because after last meeting, that one was, that was actually for an Eno board, that we hadn't used the money on effects books or supplies, but to properly code it, it wouldn't be instructional equipment. So that's how we use our money, so that's why it comes.
It's SumDog, not Slumdog.
It is SumDog.
Why, you put SumDog?
It did not affect, did it?
No, it did not.
No, Jill said that I was...
Some, some... Yeah, kindergarten, we're not watching a movie. Oh, it was supposed to be good. Yeah, I'm sorry, I distracted everything.
So, at a board meeting in the recent past, I distributed all the numbers, I don't have a sheet for them.
We do.
But you should have that.
We have, we're shit.
And most, I just asked you now, is how we're using the technology in school, you can see our numbers on the bottom. And the technology use in the world has exploded. In fact, I read recently that there are more people with cellphones in the world than there are people with toilets in the world.
Are you sure on that, can I quote that?
Actually, cellphones...
Well, I wanted to quote, because I wanted to write something about this for my article.
That's what I needed to say.
So, yeah, why wouldn't I use that? Are you sure?
Oh, yeah, you can go online, you can Google it. Manufacturers are selling a million cellphones a day, a day, worldwide, so it's amazing. So, so in, you know, a couple of technology, it's regardless of the way one feels about it, really have no choice if we're in the education business, if we're really caring about producing children who are grown to adults who can navigate their way through our world and be, be employable, they have to use technology. So starting now in kindergarten, very lightly, with things like iPads, we have, we have, we have a dozen iPads in the pre-kindergarten, it's 40 in a row, that get shared with the kids, with 60 kids, but that's where it starts for us. And in the last couple of years, we've been trying to get as many Chromebooks into classrooms as possible. Oak Grove has been in grades four, five, and six, we comped that this year, we have one Chromebook every two students in the upper grades, and we, we did that this fall. Sometimes, it's really, it's so neat to go into a classroom and see every single student in the room on a device, working sometimes collaboratively, sometimes alone, sometimes in small groups, on, on a device, and what teachers do, like in any grade four, five, or six, they, they schedule so that, that one teacher will borrow the, those eight from the next classroom, so that she can have every student in the room using a device at one time. Grade three, last year, we thought it was best if every student in that grade had an iPad, and that's where we want to really introduce the use of a device as a teaching tool, as a learning tool. And so, grade three, last year, we shared a student had an iPad assigned to them. We recently purchased keyboards for the iPads, so now there are, there are 10 keyboards that go with the iPad in each classroom, so not every, not every iPad has a keyboard, so those don't get assigned to students, those get rotated. Third grade students will take the S back, test this spring using their iPad, but you can only use an iPad as a keyboard for the S back, so, you know, we made that purchase. We, we have seriously begun to use electronic whiteboards, we started off using the smart board, we've gone to Eno boards that go to school, where about half our regular classrooms now have smart boards. We do have in next year's budget, instructional equipment, the money to buy three more smart boards, so we can look out if we continue buying at a rate that in a couple of more budgets cycles, we'd be able to break every classroom so quick, and that's certainly a goal. As you know, I've talked before about a three-year cycle, we try to replace teacher computers every three years, we're pretty close in achieving that. We probably have two or three teachers that would not, right now, we have an accomplishment, or probably a year four, I think, three people, so we're pretty close, about as close as we've gotten to doing that. And that's really important, because that, you know, that's there, then you need it to do now to go to work at, at our school as a teacher. You really can't function very long without one. It was really interesting on Monday, it was, it was actually, I had a lot of fun walking around the classroom and seeing some of our teachers who, who really, all, every single lesson is prepared on a, on their MacBook, and then into a smart board or a whiteboard, and it really...
Sort of put a hitch in the pedal, in the powertrain.
Although I have to comment, I said the last time it happened, in my time as a parent at Academy, we've had a lot of shower outages, really, I suppose for the town as a whole, but particularly the campus. And the last time when it happened, I heard from my daughter that it was like having school in the olden days.
She knows about because you told her.
I don't know, her old, old days, you know, how we were all born, that's what it, but this time, at least, she wasn't so dramatically affected.
Well, that's good, now, next year is a chance, we're going to ask them to bring coal.
She's been talking about coal for some reason.
Because they're all lanterns.
We certainly would like more technology, and of course, unfortunately, technology has, the device has a short lifespan, so we're, we're replacing, at the same time we're trying to expand, we're trying to increase the number of devices in the school, the number of devices for students, we're also facing now replacement issues, so it's not, it's not cheap, you know, with a price tag to under $4.
So I have a question. The overarching question would be, do you feel like the three schools are equitable between the three schools, with the amount of technology being...
Not currently, which is why we're seeing this budget proposal, quite an increase in Green Street schools.
And after this year, do you think you're, I mean, you're putting out a plan?
I think the idea with the plan, it will be, you know, and it may take, you know, two years, yeah.
A couple of years, but we, but do you all feel like you're on a...
Yeah, I think things like the planned opal- opalescence, opal- 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 technology, it makes it really difficult to plan, so I think the schools moving towards Chromebooks is really wise, and things like that, because it's less expensive when we know they're I think, I think I pronounced it right. Technology, it makes it really difficult to plan. So I think the schools moving towards Chromebooks is really wise, things like that, because it's, it's less expensive when we know they're gonna be gone. Takes time to build the gap. Like this year, Oprah's helping students and next year, it has to go back to teachers because their laptops are too.
When I look at our kind of history of expenditures for computer equipment, if we're at a hundred thousand, you know, we've been at 92 to 96. I mean, that type of incremental progression, I think, would keep us in good stead in terms of these, these tech plans that the principals just reviewed.
And I think we're sensitive to the taxpayers, you know, we're all taxpayers as well. So if money were an issue, I think we, we'd be asking to have a whiteboard, electronic or smartboard in the classroom, they have a connected device. There are, that's become a norm in schools in many, many parts of the country, in many parts of Vermont. So educationally, that makes sense. Financially, and as a resident, you know, we know that, that right now, that would probably be too much to ask. So if we're trying to all work together to, to move in that direction, but that, I think ultimately, that's, that, that will be what we'll see in, in all schools. Certainly, even elementary schools, to be a device, to be a student, every classroom is gonna be totally wired. We don't have our whiteboards in every classroom and so forth.
Seems we have to amend that.
So do you guys, have you seen any examples of whiteboards and whiteboards, both of you? We had a little time with it. If your, one of your teachers showed, it was quite informative to me. Any more questions on technological reviews?
Well, before we leave the, the whole, the whole budget area, when we started this process, we were asked if we had any questions or specific line questions to write them up and send them around. And I did that last week. And I, I, I hope you all got the email and brought copies just in case people didn't. But I wanted to ask what the plan is to address these. There, I think, I'm very pleased to see a budget that's not, it has no increase. But it really has no increase because we're getting an extra half a million from the state. There's, there's not a lot of evidence here that we're listening or hearing the conversation in the community. And the state is about increasing costs of school. And there are a bunch of lines that I, a bunch of items that I found that were the actual, has a little relationship to, to what we budget. Where the budget is going up very quickly. Computer equipment is one of them. And I think you just gave a good explanation of why that needs to continue to increase. And I, I get that completely, but at some point, maybe we might want to like stabilize and say, okay, we're gonna spend a hundred and four thousand dollars every year on technology. Hoping that the costs go down or we find some ways around it. But there are a bunch of other things that I'd like us to address. I don't think there's any reason to not look for additional savings because we got this, what may turn out to be a one-time increase. We won't get it next year. And if our budget's up a half a million, and we don't get an extra half a million from the state, if our costs are up a half a million, and we don't get that from the state, then we're looking at some pretty serious problems. So I think we need to be attentive to making cuts where we can. So this is a list of lines I'd like us to address at some point.
So Frank and I went over this list recently, and I could go through some of these items, and then Frank can jump in as well.
That's great. Most of the ones on the top, the, the top several, I mean, other than sixth grade graduation. The questions about the pares and the health insurance and, and in particular, it's just really hard to understand.
Yeah, let me, let me start.
Before we do, I, I wanted to, I also made copies of the older, the older, because I know most people probably don't have the 2012 budget around that gives the, gives the, the budget requests. And I didn't put budget requests on here for 11, 12, and 13, because it's just too many numbers, it wouldn't have fit on the page. But the number, the last, I, the last number on the sort of spreadsheet, the percentage numbers based on the budget, because of the trend of budget requests, not in the least by. So that was, that's what those numbers say.
So like unemployment compensation district-wide, that's really based on our experience with unemployment compensation and other, you know, the, the insurance that we, we own in the claims.
But so why didn't we only budget five thousand in Blackfield last year?
I don't know. If you look at historically, it's up and down.
Yeah.
But I know because of our experience of last year, we felt 15,000 was probably most, more appropriate than five. So that's just a historical thing. Yeah. The sixth grade graduation, Frank and I reduced it because we think the proposal came at twice. That was up to 5,000. And last year was 2,500, and it's been just under 2,000. So I don't think there was a reason to increase it double.
Yeah, that was an error on the spreadsheet.
We took that.
So that was.
I think Jen and I both leveled front of that and Frank dumped it, yeah.
So that's taken care of. Crossing guards, let's see, that's under transportation further down, under page two, towards the bottom, page two. So that's incrementally gone up, and primarily because the town used to supplement, support some of the funding for our crossing guards. And probably about three years ago, they, they said they couldn't do that. So we've taken on the burden of that. And if you look before 2013, so let's see if, in this budget that you passed out there, if I can find transportation.
It's on, yeah, the pages are different. I'm just looking. It'd be the, I think the second copy, the second little copy.
Well, I'm assuming it was like in the 60s or less, but then when they, they said we're not gonna fund any of it, that's when we had to bump it up.
So the number. The number. The number of crossing guards is not suddenly going.
No, no, it's that, for our town, we used to fund it solely because we used to get some support. So that answers that. So the paraprofessionals. So if you recall when we explained on page, where the staffing is. Yeah, up at page three, what has paraprofessionals and others, it's up 87,000. But then when you, I'd ask you to put a little notation, see page 10, special ed, because on page 10, it's the offset of 79,000. And as I explained, or we explained initially, what we needed to do is code those positions to really what they were doing. Many of them were listed as special ed pares when in fact they're doing regular ed work. So we can't count them for special ed. So there's a reduction of 78,626, kind of offsetting that, that first page.
Kind of changed when it went to the SU as well.
Not pares. No, TJ does, but pares stay in the local budgets. But I, I think what I would say is when you, when you look at that, if you're looking at a big increase there, it's because it's shifted from special ed to regular ed. There's an offset. So quite frankly, from year to year, there, there isn't a big change.
Why is it, why is it so different for Green Street, the increases on?
I don't know. I mean, again, it might be.
It's always based on, on staffing needs and student needs.
Yeah.
I think it's coding too, isn't it? Because there hasn't been that many drastic staff changes.
Right. That's why I was surprised if the numbers moved around slightly.
If you look at the, the actual there in Green Street, it's 264, and the budget's still less than the actual. And it was an assignment issue where, and you know, if students with IP move out, and there's, the, the, the pair has been utilized for a variety of services. And oftentimes, they're retained.
They stay.
Yeah, but, but it's relative. You have, you can't charge it to special ed or else you'll have to give back the 60% rebate.
And then the next section, healthcare, I mean, I think that's, you know, you're looking at a historical trend of some years when there was a 10% or a 15% increase. This year, it's loaded in at, I think, four and a half.
But it's, the question there was that the actuals, well, they move around, but, but we're so far ahead of them. I mean, we haven't seen increases, like the actual for the last couple of years is way over the 4% or whatever the, the rate of increase has been.
What page are you looking at?
Uh, well, it would be on page three. Well, maybe it's, it may have moved up because you got a different, a different draft.
You'll help me choose a subject.
I'm looking at page three of health insurance on the latest draft.
Yeah. And I'm looking at this over the, the four years, the three years of actual, the 11, 12, and 13 actuals never approach what, well, in, in Academy, they don't approach. And it, I don't know, probably don't approach what we're, we're budgeting. So I'm wondering, I mean, how, it seems like we should know exactly what the health insurance. And the, somewhere in here too, there's the property liability insurance, where it seems like we should know what that's gonna be, which should be, the actual should be pretty close to what we budgeted.
Well, help, typically, we do know the rates, like we do now. And they're saying it'll be up four and a half percent. But it is unusual for people to do plan changes.
Family planners.
Yeah, and when there's turnover, someone comes in as a single plan, maybe somebody replacing a two-person center. At a $8,000 a single plan, you know, $15,000 for a two-person, doesn't take long to have a variance. It looks substantial.
Well, again, just, you know, that's just a question, because I don't understand how that works. So we could watch it and see if there's any pattern that we can. One of the, kind of what I'm looking for overall is that instead of just going from year to year, and, and, you know, we see a need, like a Green Street need a long time ago, or whatever. Like our parking lot or things like that, they pop up and we toss the money in, as opposed to having like, okay, we're not, we don't want more than a 90% increase in, in this area. Or we want to stabilize our technology, we want to stabilize our software, or how much we're gonna spend for new equipment. You know, those kinds of things. You just say, this is how much we're gonna do for this every year instead, so that we've got some stability. There's some evidence that we're looking at the, the cost and trying to stop the growth in the areas that we can't. We can't do anything about it in terms of health insurance. But we can, there are some things we can.
So professional development, it looks like that's under page seven. I think we're talking with principals, professional development. So 5,700, puts the middle of the page. So the actual is less 2013, 14?
Yeah, and the, the, let's see, professional development. Compare the actual. Let me find that.
Well, so the actual for 2013, 14 was 2,600, and it was budgeted at 6,000.
So there's, there's a lot of ground there. And that, and the, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly why I put that in, other than there was a difference from the actual, what we were budgeting for the next few years. But looking at that, and looking at the 1%, and the traveling conferences, and the, the teacher leader, and any other professional development lines. Are there, are there other things, Jill, we talked about? There are a lot of different places that professional development happens. And they all are increased, and teacher leader increased a lot, and we want that to happen. And we want that to be the direction we're, you know, we want that to continue. But the other ones kind of keep increasing too. And then sometimes a conference will come out of, or a, a smartboard will come out of the 1%. And it seems like they're just, it's a little, it's a little muddy in terms of how much we're actually spending on professional development. And are we, is it going in the, the best place of this? There's so many places that that gets, gets approached. So it's, it's hard to, it's hard to get a handle on whether, on how much we're spending, and how fast it's increasing. And is it, is that sustainable? If we want to sustain that, we want to say, okay, this is how much we can afford over here for professional development, then figure out how to use it.
Well, I think we do that all the time in terms of what the needs are. Any of the action plan discussions that we've had relate to that, and also the student outcome work. I guess when I look at those two lines, I'm looking at the administrative professional development and administrative travel. They're pretty in line with other districts. And then that other area that you mentioned, the teacher leaders, that's been a conscious effort to improve there.
Yeah, absolutely.
As a, as a new person coming in, you know, to this organization and, and hearing some of the presentations from Kyle Lyle, and Paul, and Brian Bittner, and seeing the data. It looks like we're getting a lot of results for the, for the professional development. In terms of the literacy rates at the third grade that, that has had a tremendous increase in the Bradrow Town system. A lot of the assessments that I've seen, and I know you've seen them, the, the graphs are very favorable in terms of state required assessments. So from an outside perspective, looking in, it appears that, that the system is utilizing that money very effectively. You're targeting areas of need, and you're making a major impact on, on literacy and, and math. So if, you know, I haven't raised concerns as the fiscal guy that says, gee, what if, you know, are we, you know, not being efficient with the use of money in that area? I've been very impressed with it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any question that the money's being used well, and the results are, you know, really worth it. It's just, we're facing, and not this year, because of, you know, the extra money we're giving the state, but we're facing a very changing climate, a very different climate, a very different world. And I think we just, we need to start thinking sooner rather than later about how we're gonna come with that. Can we, do we need to continue? We've made all this progress, and we've got all these changes now, these institutions and systems in place. Do we need to keep spending that much money now that that's happened? Do we need to keep sending people to ASCD now that we've got teacher leaders and professional reading groups established? And that's, I don't know the answer. And I definitely don't want to see anything backwards, but we're gonna be looking at, being forced to make reductions. But I'd much rather be doing them in places where we, like that, than in staff.
I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and say I have an answer, but I'm gonna have a perspective. And the perspective is that, that we need to continue to be conscious of, and be sensitive to our taxpayers. But also be very sensitive to the needs of our, needs of our kids, and needs of our teachers. And that, you know, we're doing something very remarkable here that, that's, that's, that's really rare in the United States. We're, we're actually increasing our poverty rate. So we have. I thought maybe we are. We're, we're seeing an increase in our poverty rate. There's, there's pretty substantial over the last four or five years. Dramatic increase in, in the needs of our students and families. And while we're experiencing that, the typical response is that, that from districts is that the student achievement rates go down. We've actually experienced all that, and our student achievement rates are increasing. We're, we're above the state average in, in every category. And that's amazing. And we have people contacting, contacting us from, from different schools in Vermont. Having been a principal in Massachusetts, I have colleagues in other states, in Massachusetts, who've come here to want to know how we're doing it. You know, so, you know, it's sort of, when you're in the middle of something that's really phenomenal, you don't often realize. You don't, when you step back and, and gain that perspective, it's like, wow, is it district. Bradrow Town School District is accomplishing some really amazing things with kids. And the kinds of things we're offering for our students. Spanish in elementary school is absolutely remarkable, this same age, for a community that, that has such a high poverty rate, that's unheard of. And the kinds of things that, that our teachers are doing, with student instruction, differentiating expression, the kinds of support we're giving kids. Who are, who otherwise would not be successful. And we've got them on grade level. Where, you know, a lot of districts where these kids would not. But it, it, that comes with a, with a cost. And a lot of it is this constant, ongoing training and development of our staff. And also, I mean, a lot of that is also recharging advantages, because our people work so hard. You know, we have teachers who work in 10, 11, 12, 13. You know, we have teachers who work in ten, eleven, twelve-hour days consistently, and you know, in order to keep them sharp, we need to keep training them, we need to keep giving them opportunities to go out, to network, to to share what they're learning, what they've learned. A lot of our folks go out and actually teach what, what we're doing to other districts. So, you know, I mean, I would advocate that we continue doing this as much as we possibly can, because when we cut back on that, I think we'll begin to, you know, be the beginning of, of the end of the kind of growth that we've experienced.
So...
I also think another challenge is with that, is bringing new staff in to our schools, and then having to go back and, you know, repurchase professional development that we've done years before, but to provide our new staff the same type of training that other folks have had. For some, we're constantly thinking about how to keep moving forward, and also bringing new people in, and bringing them up to where, where we are, and where we want to be, you know, that first month of the school.
So I, I want to publicly, sorry, I just wanted to publicly thank Dave, because he spent, obviously, a lot of time going back and looking at the numbers. And I, I hope you're hearing what I, what I heard from Dave when he first talked to me about this, and gave me a heads up that he had done it. It's not a criticism, and, and definitely that, I think, all of us in here recognize, and are really fortunate, that we're really fortunate, we're very pleased, that we have such great leadership on that. At the same time, we here, on this, from the state level, from the taxpayers, whatever, just like you here, as taxpayers, you know, where are we, why are the budget, that's why I asked the number of kids, and we're, I'm thrilled that we're able to bring back a budget. I mean, when I said earlier to you guys, I wanted, you said, level funding or level services, I said, I'm really going for level funding, and you all gave me the evil eye. But it's...
No, we did it.
And you did it.
And I just want to acknowledge that every year that we've been working on this, I mean, it's, again, it's the balance between outstanding programming that, that you want, and that we want, and the ability of the community to pay for it, to fund it, and we're sensitive to that.
So I, I mean, what Dave has done here is look to see, and try to understand, it's not, it's not a criticism, we're just trying to understand, and what exactly, where do we spend money, and is it still something that we want to keep doing? So just those questions that have to be asked, but they're not criticisms of, of the work, really.
No, I hope you'll, you'll come on the town meeting, and we'll invite you to talk about some, or any of the other things that people are gonna ask about, that they do ask about. Because you know, I don't think we use you enough, and you're way more articulate about it than, you know...
Yeah, I mean, we don't view it as a criticism, at all, and it's an opportunity to, to share our perspective. Hopefully, it'll broaden your perspective, whether you, if it changes your mind, I don't know.
That's why I asked him.
At least it'll broaden your perspective, so you have some background, and you better articulate, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do.
Which is exactly why I asked him, I need that information.
Just asked a question about the five hundred thousand dollars you're mentioning, I just don't know what that is.
Being new, I wouldn't know that there's money there.
The first page?
Yeah. But it's money that's not a regular...
It's the money that the state sends to us, and it's, I think Frank has explained it a couple of times.
Oh, okay.
It's getting exciting at the hang of it, but basically, we're having, and you can fix this after I mess it up, after having, having kids in poverty, we get an extra point two. Instead of counting them once, we count the one point two or one point two-five, so that we get, whatever our per pupil cost is, we get that plus point two. So that, it's gone up because we have more kids in poverty, not because we have more kids in school.
Right, but...
And it's, this year went on behalf of four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, and not that much?
Yeah.
So you're saying it's not gonna, it's not gonna increase that much?
And the other place that we...
Unless we get work...
But it's not gonna go away either.
Unless they change that for legislative...
Yeah, unless legis, they legislate.
But the other part that we balance this budget on, and we did it much more last year, was grabbing from the unused funds, the surplus from other years.
That's what Frank's gonna explain. It's really the reserve. Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's not a, it's not a good context to put the, the relief that we're seeing on the tax rate attributed to that number. So the, the way this works is, we take our spending plan, fifteen four oh two, we look at all of our other revenue sources, which are, in this case, special ed is the only other substantial one, you see that on page one, one million, seven hundred and eleven thousand. We look at our Title I submarine, the five hundred and twenty thousand, so we're looking at all of our other resources. And it, it just comes down to, what are we proposing to spend? What else do we have to pay for that? Then we go to the state ed fund and say, uh, we, we need twelve million, five eighty-eight to balance our budget. So the higher that number is, the higher our tax rate is. That is not like new money that is subsidizing our tax rate. As that number grows, and as you see the four hundred ninety-eight thousand going up, that's a bad thing. From the point of view is that, that all of that is being financed through the tax rate, okay? So when you say four hundred ninety-eight thousand or five hundred thousand of money that we're getting from the state, which is not gonna happen routinely, if we spend another hundred thousand, that number would go up a hundred thousand, right? Or if we found another hundred thousand in tuition revenue from students that wanted to come here, which probably will happen if we keep getting the good news out about our, our student performance, then the state number goes down. It, it's the balancing number. So the point, the point is to characterize that as, well, we got a half a million dollars of sort of state money that's helping us or relieving the tax burden, is, is not mechanically the way that formula works. A way to explain that. The way to explain why our tax rate is not going through the roof is primarily is because our spending is down. And the major source of our spending reduction is, you see it on page ten, we're down four hundred and seven thousand in special education spending. So there's a huge reduction in costs that is in this budget. There are increases, the budget's not down four hundred thousand, because there are these other increases, like we just reviewed, the health insurance is a very large one. So, so that's the reason why there is somewhat of a palatable tax rate, if you call one point nine percent increase, palatable. It, it's not because the state's sending us any new money. That's not the case. It's because we cut the budget a lot. That's, that's why we are having a relatively flat tax rate. The other issue that every other town that has been this supervisory union are dealing with, that you're not, which drives the tax rate substantially, is a loss of enrollment, because it is such a simple formula. They don't care about programs when they go to the school funding forum, they just say, what do you spend? How many kids do you have? They divide the two, they do that ratio, times the statewide property tax, and that's what drives the tax rate. And where does all that come from? It's the twelve million, five eighty-eight plug number, it's the balancing number. So the higher that number is, the higher the tax rate, the lower that number is, the lower the tax rate. So the, in, in this formulaic system, the only way you manage your, your liability is, uh, more kids, less spending. Or, or more revenue from someone other than the state. You know, because that's the same thing is not spending, if you're, if you're getting new revenue tuition, compensation, new grants, you know, but that, 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 that was a good question, and I hope it, it clears that apart.
It didn't clear it up, but it corrected this mistake. It didn't clear it up, so I understand it, but I'll keep working.
But we're getting time.
That's why we have Frank.
But, but it, it's good to have, I, I think, that conversation, because I think that two percent may be of the folks that deal with school finance, understand the formula, and you're asking, you know, excellent questions, and to try to connect the equalization factors to your decisions as a board to, to invest is, is really important. And we'll probably have to go through this a few more times, but it, it gets to your point as well, Joe, is we have, what do we say, eight hundred and sixty kids, but you look at the tax sheet, and it says they're only crediting eight hundred and twenty-one kids. Well, why is that? Well, it's because they only count pre-K as a half a kid, okay? And, and again, you're supposed to recognize that when you get into the tax rate calculation, that's actually not creating any burden on the tax rate, because a half, point four-six, times the base head spending of nine thousand, four fifty-nine, is, is about, you know, it's less than four thousand, or right around four thousand, right? So as long as we cut a check to the preschool provider for, for less than that, plus all of the coordination that we do, we're not gonna increase the tax rate. And, and that's, every program that we talk about, we, if we can link these factors and these incentives and disincentives to, you know, good resource management, good, you know, good results, then hopefully we can be accountable to the public, and folks will begin to understand what we can control and what we can't. So if I could just follow up on one other item on Dave's list about electricity and fuel oil.
Yeah.
Again, those are areas that Frank and I looked at, and you know, we, we could probably consider shaving some money on fuel oil, but, you know, I guess when we talked about it, it just felt like, you know, this is a pretty lean budget, and, you know, if we have a little surplus, it just gets to lower the taxes next year.
Yeah, and I love it that there's, we hit within one percent of the year, and it's generally a favorable one percent. I think that's a, it's a great idea, I just, these are gonna, they are gonna drop, I mean, we know it's gonna be ten percent electricity, and it's gonna be a while till we get the pellet.
Well, it'll be next year. Yeah, that, that was a concern with cutting this section of the budget this year, I agree, we're, we're, we will see those line item savings, but if, if the control systems don't go in just right, or between now and then, we have other systems that fail, if we have a surplus in the electricity line, it seems the way I'm hearing the status of a lot of the plants, the physical plants, probably have to send it in repair somewhere, so we didn't want to cut it.
Yeah, and it may not match up, but, or, or funny to, but...
Right.
The only other question Frank and I, I don't wanna take too much time on this one, but the state's recently said that the school tax is gonna grow two cents, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we, if we are below or above two percent, if, if we reduce, I don't know how to ask this. When the, when the people of the town get their tax bill, the school tax is gonna be up two percent. Regardless of what we do, or regardless of what we do.
That's right, if we, if we did nothing at all, meaning we spent exactly the same amount this year into the future, and we got all of the revenue that we got, we, we did no change, we just operated the school, taxes would go up two percent. That's factored into that page eleven. And, and that, we, we are going up nearly two percent, right? Even though, as we just talked, we basically spend about the same amount of money, right? We're down in, in total, page ten, we're down fifty-five thousand, which is one-third of a percent. But our taxes are still going up, and why?
It's because of the way that's kind of turned through.
It's because of what you're describing, it's, it's that, um, I love the way they, they get the font down. One of these days I'm gonna have to buy glasses, but...
Yeah, they are.
Line thirty-two, there's, you see that, that, the numbers there, based on...
Twenty-three, six, nine?
Yeah.
Home base, yeah.
Like, okay, there, it started in two thousand thirteen, point eight nine, and then it goes to point nine four, and then point nine eight. The two cents is right there, point nine eight going to a dollar.
Yeah.
So if they didn't do that, if the state didn't do that, we wouldn't have a tax increase. So, so you could say that the state, you know, the state is passing on the tax.
Well, we might, the bottom line is...
I say that regularly.
Yeah.
The bottom line is still out of your package.
Great, thank you, appreciate that very much.
So I'm a little bit hesitant at the time, and we have a forum next time. And I think Kyle may have come not to hear the budget.
Well, she certainly came to hear the budget, but she also has a draft of a presentation that we'd like to present.
So I met with Marissa Duncan-Holly and Shelley Wilson
Hello.
to talk about the forum, looking at the original community forum topics that you gave us. And so Marissa and Shelley will do the majority of the presentation, give you some statistics on homelessness.
Can you read the, what we wrote?
Sure.
It's gonna be it, because I bet not everybody remembers.
Yep. Learn about our current behavioral programs in the three elementary schools, including some statistics on Bradrow's challenges, including homelessness, poverty facing a significant portion of our students. How are our children identified as needing extra help or extra challenges? What's currently offered for remedial learners? What's our plan for making sure the advanced learners are always engaged? We'll look at how we can make sure we are both meeting the needs of all of our children.
Kyle, do you have a line in there, after homelessness, poverty facing, so that of course our students see also how our three elementary schools are alike, and how they are different, and why?
I don't, so I must have an earlier...
Do you have, how are children identified as needing extra help for our students? Yeah, that's on, I'm not sure why, it's on the website, one. The one about how they're alike and how they're different, why?
Maybe somebody wanted that taken off at some point?
Or I have it up earlier.
Yeah, I think this, this is a later version. So is that difficult to add, or...
Well, let me tell you what they're planning, and then you can tell me if you feel like there's something missing, okay? So some statistics on homelessness, Frank, we do an overview of the behavior support programs that are in place at each school. A little bit of information about PBIS, a sample of what a behavior plan might include, as well as a procedure for placing students on a plan. A quick overview of the summer work that administrators did, learning about students in trauma. And that's one of the things that I wanted to talk with, I was going to say it earlier, when we talk about professional development, our students are coming from very different situations than what they were even two, five years ago. And so we need to start helping our teachers understand how to better help students that are, are really living in trauma, pervasive trauma. We're, we're trying to see if John Sessions, who's a special educator at Oak Grove, can do a quick update on multi-tiered systems of support. We were not going to spend a lot of time on the data around where we are with students needing remedial help and enrichment. We spent some time at the first forum with our enrichment teachers doing a presentation. We've given data, the last one, on where we are with how many students are needing remedial support. So we were more thinking about the behavior piece, because that is not something that we've touched in the first two forums.
I think there is a section of the population that is looking to hear what we're doing for the advanced learning specifically.
So I'm just not sure how that's different from what we did on the very first forum, when they, when the enrichment people came, and they talked about all the opportunities.
Right, but I don't think we talked about if your kid's in the classroom and understands everything that's going on, what happens in the classroom.
Okay, so what is the specific...
I think it's important, even though there, there is some redundancy, hopefully there'll be more people. But also, it's what we, it's what we're saying is gonna happen, so it needs to be addressed. And I think that that's the, I mean, that was one of the primary drivers for all the forums in the first place, is the needs of those kids.
Yeah, and, and it's a good place, yeah, to do that, so we'll probably include that in the multi-tiered support, that sort of place.
And I think it, for, for some of the specific questions that I've heard, you wanna do a particularly, look particularly at the math program, and what happens after a kid meets, or finishes, or gets it. And I think the, the Wilson reading program, how you, that's sole, or advertises for remedial programs. And the, their policy, and I actually emailed and asked about this, their policy, their recommendations when somebody is competent in the program, to individualize. So I think you're gonna wanna have try and have some examples of, how the Wilson reading program...
Wilson reading is...
Maybe it's not the Wilson reading, maybe it's another program.
Foundations, which we use, which is a wise expression, K through three, I don't know if it's made by Wilson.
Yeah, that's probably what it is.
But it's not the remedial reading program?
Wilson reading is, is a specialized instructional program for students that have similar challenges. have serial challenges.
Usually students are...
And it's typically special ed. Whenever our regular teachers don't do that, you have to be, be certified Wilson instructor to do that. So that's...
So just clarifying that because it seems like some people in the community might think that we're using a remedial reading program always.
Yeah, they do.
Probably 5% of our students are less, are involved, maybe 10% max are involved in Wilson reading.
So talking about how those, how you customize those programs to be kids that are off the, off the, off the chapter.
Which is often went to foundations as a tier one core program to reduce the amount of kids who have to remediate with Wilson, which we've seen that happening.
So then the next meeting, we're going to start the forum at six again?
We meet at 5:30 and start at six. It's advertised for six. Yeah, six to seven.
Did we only need a half hour?
I think that's what we're going, 5:30 to, to six.
We don't have anything, well...
I think, you know, the main thing will be to adopt a budget.
So I guess, I have one more thing on crosswalks. We'll come back to that, but the next agenda item sent for, for the half an hour long meeting part is only adopting a budget?
Warrants, budget.
Anything else?
Yeah, leave time for questions.
Yes, then we'll be...
And can the, the principals send home a, something, put it in the, in the caller in your newsletters and send something home?
And we'll do something with food again? Do you think we can have that?
Then we'll do it again. We'll do it in the library.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's here.
Starts at 5:30, starts at 5:00. We start at 5:30 and this starts at 6:00.
So for this meeting, the only thing left on the agenda was the updates on crosswalks. And I have a note here from Steve Barrett. He's very excited and enthused. So he's, they've been continuing to monitor the speed of the vehicles on Western Avenue. Have the following data to report. Eastbound traffic and the signpost in front of Station 2, average speed is 30, the 85th percentile is 30. I don't really know what 85th percentile is, Frank? Is that another math thing?
That's good.
Thank you. This is why I don't know music. The westbound traffic on the pole at Diamond Stones is the average speed is 28 and the 85th percentile is 33. Now, the good news, Renode Construction is going to install the new rectangular rapid flash beacon, also an acronym, RRFB. And they're looking at doing the one for Canal Street as well, which would be, I talked to him about that today, roughly where the person was hit around Christmas Day, wasn't it?
Which is not your, your problem.
Which is not your crosswalk. But, but eventually, possibly, we could look at one for there too and people would just have two of them on Canal Street. Anyway, that's up for discussion to think about, but he said that, Mike said he'd install soon, just have to work around some weather. Not that we'd have any of that going on.
So you need a backhoe and...
No, he's talking about the jack in particular.
So the committee comment about the speed that, that the crosswalks are, that radar thing, that 33 sounds like it's the, the speed that 85% of people are going?
It's 85th percentile.
That's 13 miles per hour over the school speed.
Yes, and here's a question. Yesterday I happened to look at this. It says 20 miles an hour when light is flashing.
Right.
When, I had to do that. When is that supposed to be flashing?
It's, it's timed to be...
That's what I thought. It was during school hours, but it's not.
No, it's, it's, it's about an hour and a half, in the morning, an hour and a half or so in the afternoon timed to be while the students are coming and going.
So it's not 30, 13 miles over the speed limit all the time? It's 30 miles over the speed.
Well, right, and apparently they're not able to differentiate that, but Lieutenant, who was out there and spoke to me, said that given the signage, he said is not, they cannot issue a ticket for someone, someone's doing 33 during the school time. He said he cannot issue a ticket because they're only 3 miles over the pole. There's something with the signage that...
That the flashing thing is...
That doesn't help enforcement.
Well, the signage is confused. Okay, so I think if there's no other discussions, comments, I have one last thing. Is it possible to include anything from Deb during this forum next time?
Oh, yeah.
Because there's lots of stuff going on that's coordinated and it would be good to, for people to hear that. You guys are planning on that already?
Maybe something about the overlap or...
Yeah. I mean, Marisa worked with her.
Deb.
I'd love to... Anything else or we would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So secondly?
Any discussion, all in favor?